One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dan, roll call, please.
Mr. Eriko.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mrs. Maroni.
Here.
Mrs. Conway.
Here.
Mrs. Budowski.
Here.
Mrs. Mattiker.
Yes.
All, Mrs. Patel, Mrs. Pang, and Dr. Chen.
Thank you, Dan. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home New Tribune and Star Ledger on July 15, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Alright, we're gonna open it up to resolutions. So, Dr. Bregan?
Thank you, Board President Eriko. If it's okay with you, I will share the screen to go over the policies. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Hopefully, I get that correctly. If someone could tell me if they could see that on the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
A little bigger?
There you go.
It is perfect.
Okay. As you can see, for the resolutions, we had some approval of bylaws and policies. I'll just go over those. This is first reading for all of them. I'll go over quickly the summaries and then I'll defer to the committee. If anyone has any questions thereafter, just let us know, okay? As we go down the list here. First policy was related to the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Basically enhances the FMLA and provides more duration and additional FMLA status for people that may need it, for those that are sick, those that are taking care of family members, or possibly in some respects have childcare issues related to the coronavirus. That is also a mandated policy and it's new. Policy, the review is religion in schools. It's a revised policy. Put some clarification language in there related to the statute, but doesn't really change anything. The key for us on that is that if we have to provide equal access for all organizations that want to use our schools. Obviously, as a school, we don't endorse any one particular religion over another. The next policy is a mandated policy. It's a revision related to sports participation and heat in the summertime and obviously when it's hot out. We're following the NJSI AA guidelines. We reviewed this with our athletic directors at both high schools. We already knew this. This is just formalizing the language of the policy to be aligned to the NJSI AA's requirements. That's also a mandated policy. The next is the student assessment policy, which is mandated. There's a revision there to include some of the updates. One is that the, instead of using the park language, it's the NJSLA. And we also have end-of-course assessments as opposed to the park assessments as the policy had indicated. And the science assessment was in fourth grade for elementary students on the NJSLA. It's now going to be in fifth grade. I think it was actually slated for fifth grade this year. The next policy we have is eligibility for residents and non-residents. It clears up some of the language. Again, it's more aligned with the New Jersey state statutes that we can't require the driver's license when students are registering, demonstrate residency, but it can be used if we need to help verify. In addition, there's guidance there for international students on their visas. The board has the option, if they're not residents, to accept them or not. We reviewed that policy on the committee. That's also a mandated policy. The attendance policy is changing some language again to be aligned with the New Jersey Administrative Code in defining what would be a an absence that was authorized, an excused absence and an unexcused absence, and how we can do those that meet the state and federal regulations regarding the holidays and such. Again, there's really nothing new there, nothing different from what we put into practice. Next policy was immunization revision. It's not a mandated policy, but it's recommended from Strauss Esme. Again, to make sure our policy is aligned with the new state statutes and administrative code. The next policy deals with administering an opioid antidote, otherwise known as Narcan, I think is what it's called commonly. And the policy language just says that we can now, we made the option of including all our schools that were going to have it available. Before, it was only in our secondary schools. And the reason for that, God forbid, we don't anticipate any children having those reactions, but sometimes, you know, staff members or visitors or other people in the building, that we will have the ability to have the Narcan available at all of our schools, not just the secondary schools. And that's a mandated policy as well. Two suspension and expulsion policies. They're pretty much, they say the same thing. The language was changed so that on a first instance or on frequent instances of with the same student, that the principal will have a meeting to discuss whether there's any supports, whether they be with the community, outside agencies, that we can help the child to address the maladaptive behaviors to be more conducive to a school environment. Both those policies are mandated as well. Personnel records is a revision on just defining which records are open for public open requests and could be shared with the public of personnel records. Again, the language here is just to be aligned more with the New Jersey Administrative Code and statutes. The last policy that we looked at revising is the public participation at board meetings. And we revised some of the language to make sure the public comment section is pertaining to district matters, school district matters, and not just anything in the community. We've also shored up some of the things about the presiding officer's authority on making sure those comments are conducive to a conductive meeting. If you look at the end here, it's kind of already was in the policy. We wanted to make sure this was adhered to. The presiding officer being the board president as the authority. You know, number two is important, I think, for us to note that, you know, you warn when statements or questions or inquiry could become abusive, obscene, or maybe defamatory. The board president has the authority to stop that in the same way that if the conduct or the comments are not consistent with the decorum of the meeting, the comment section can be ended. That's all we have for the policy. The rest is, this is the actual policies as we have here. I just went over quick summaries. I will defer to the committee members as well as our board attorney who were at the meeting. If there's anything left out or anything that you would like to add.
I think you covered it all.
Anything from Beth or Carol?
No.
No, I agree. Already covered all. We discussed them at length, but you did cover it all.
Okay.
Alright, any board comments? Okay.
Elizabeth's hand is up.
Excuse me?
Elizabeth's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elizabeth, go ahead. Sorry.
Two minor questions. On the policy that the motor vehicle license identification is not required, what form of ID is required other than a bill or whatever? Because there is a New Jersey identification card that any resident in the state of New Jersey can get. Was there any stipulation about utilizing that? I mean, if you don't have a driver's license, you don't have a driver's license, but any resident can get the New Jersey identification card to use as official identification. Was that anywhere?
Well, you can accept it, but the issue is you can't necessarily mandate it. But it's definitely something that is acceptable to show your residence.
And the second thing with the vaccinations. If or when we get a vaccination for this COVID-19, can we require or mandate that the children get a vaccine?
It's all gonna depend. You are still gonna have, it actually, the language of the statute basically shows that it, you know, will have efficacy. And then you will still have the religious exemption and you'll still have the health exemption because those are both statutory. Right, but it's all with the Department of Health regulations.
Thank you for explaining.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else on policies? Let me make sure I'm not missing anyone. Go to my next screen here. Okay. Alright, Dan, take over.
Okay, item number two, an anticipation of opening September. We've discussed about possibly having some type of monitors for temperature for the kids when they come into schools. We anticipated it was going to exceed the bid limit of $44,000. So we went out to bid for these types of items. We did receive two bids. The differences in prices, as you can see, are huge. The reason is because the one for $1,895 a unit is a kiosk type. It's not one that each person has to go up and put their face up to it to get the temperature taken. We were looking for something with a wide area screening, which is a lot more money. It's $13,000. But if we are going to open up and we want to take temperature to the students, we have to do it on a wider scale than individual, otherwise we'll never get the kids in class. We are looking to award the bid and we don't know how many we're going to need at this point in time, but if we do need these, we're looking at the $13,047 units to be awarded tonight.
So Dan, can I have a question?
Oh, good. Go ahead, Jerry. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. So last thing we talked about is lease. And this is purchase or this is lease? Because some of these equipment, you know, some of these equipments are new. I don't know what kind of warranty they have. Is this a lease or this is purchase?
This is a purchase. This is a great purchase for these items.
Can we get a lease price, Dan?
I can ask them for a lease price. If it's going to exceed 44, I may have to put in a bid out.
Right.
But this was...
I think Jerry's concerned and my concern and maybe other board members' concerns are we're going to be spending probably 750 grand on these things for six months, maybe.
Yeah, because this is one, yeah, this is, you'll need at least 19 or 20, including the main office or 21, two entrances for these stuff and minimum.
Because some schools, some schools will need two of them because you're never going to get the kids in.
Yeah.
We looked at the options there and initially, and I didn't do the RFP, but initially they said they weren't interested in leasing. Obviously, because they see a market here, they weren't willing to do that at this point. The initial price quoted was $23,000, so when it went out to bid, it came significantly down. The plan was, and we still didn't work out exactly the numbers, that's why I think the request tonight, Dan, was just for the amount, not the actual number, because some of the thermal camera screenings, they give you a larger scope. Like, if I'm thinking about JP Stevens High School or Edison High School, when you walk in that main lobby, those cameras can catch a bunch of people all at once. The individual kiosk is akin to walking through a metal detector. And either it's going to look at your forehead or your wrist, and that'll work too for like staff entrances or some of the less, you know, if I think of the high schools, some of the ones that aren't used as much as the main entrances. So that we wouldn't have to limit the egress just to one entrance where everybody has to walk in and out. So that was the idea, that we would use a combination of both of these things. And to try to accommodate, one, make sure we do the temperature screen. They also check for masks. And also to do it as efficiently as we can, so it doesn't take a half hour to get into school.
But, Dan, if we approve this tonight, what's the lead time on ordering? Can we hold off as long as possible? Because my gut feeling is, again, the governor speaks every Friday about schools and we may have something come out tomorrow.
Well, as soon as we get the PO out to them, they'll be able to order. I don't know if they're in stock at this point in time, but the reason why we had this special meeting tonight is because we just opened this bid yesterday. And if we waited until August 24th, there's no way we'd have it for the opening of school. So we wanted to make sure we had enough time. But I believe, I think if we waited a week or two, I don't think it'd be a big deal. Because as long as we don't wait till the 24th of August, that's really, that's cutting it close.
Yeah, and I think, Dan, didn't we put in the RFP, if they were awarded the bid, they have to produce them by September 1?
That's what we put in this best. That's exactly right, yes.
So we can't, the idea was, Mr. Shi, like you said, that if we order these, we want to make sure they would be onsite, ready to go when the kids potentially, students potentially return to school. So I don't think we could wait too long if we wanted to wait till tomorrow. Board President Eriko, to see if the governor changes something. But, you know, and I think we did. And in the bid, we actually did ask for a lease price, but Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody came up with a bid.
No, they didn't.
So...
Of course, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Another question is, let's say we order these Monday, you know, if this is approved tonight, and we find out next Friday, we're all virtual. Can we return them? I mean, is... I mean, because we're going to be eating, we're going to be eating a lot of money here.
Yeah, I realize that. If the board does approve these tonight, that doesn't bind us from doing anything with them. We don't have to buy them. If we want to buy them, at least we'll have a bid already awarded. But if we, I could call them tomorrow and ask him, what's the latest date I can give you a purchase order and have them for September 1st?
Alright, that's a good idea. Okay, I agree. Any other?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have, so...
Go ahead, Sherry.
So my question is that how do you know that these equipment or machine is efficient? Like, is there any kind of a study or any type of materials they have given us that they will actually catch somebody who has high temperatures, suppose, you know, 30 kids walk in? So like, what's the guarantee that it's going to catch somebody with high temperature?
Well, we did pilot.
I think you had a pilot at the main office, didn't you?
Yeah, and we actually had a couple of vendors that came in. And I think the one that came in with that $13,000 bid was the best one that we saw operationally. And we did follow up with the head scan thermometers and it did seem fairly accurate. We had a couple other vendors that weren't so accurate and didn't work so well. And I think they are accurate. But, you know, until we put things into practice, especially new technology, Mrs. Mattiker, we don't really know.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, when the kids start coming to school, and I spoke about this to you, Dr. Bregan, that we also need to have a policy where parents of kids who are actually sending, putting the kids on buses or wrapping the kids to school, they need to sign off, you know, on parent portal or somewhere else that they took the temperature of their kid and the kids don't have temperature, just to have that kind of a double-layered protection. And just to go back to the point of leasing versus purchasing, is there an option where we just approve like this whatever amount? And then, so that Dan and the administration, they have the ability either lease it or purchase it without having this board meeting? Because obviously, we want to make sure that when the kids come in, we have these equipments in place.
Agreed. So again, we'll vote on it later, but I think if we could wait as long as we can, if Dan can make that phone call tomorrow and let us know the last possible date, we could order these to get them in in time for schools and have them set up and functional and tested and all that. I think that's the way I would like to go. Jerry, you have something else to say?
Yeah, so I saw a couple set up in the office. So the one that, the Service Works Inc., that's the one that was the first setup. Dr. Bregan, is that correct? Because then you have another one that's coming later, because I also tested. It seems okay. So that's the second one. That one is not put your face on. That's similar, that you have a scan. Yeah, well, yeah.
There was a...
But Dan said that you have to like, you know, you have to like, you know, look at it and that's another one.
No, that's the third one. The third one sets up, I could almost say it's like walking through a metal detector like you would at a courthouse. It has two walls and a top. And that one, it's only wide enough for one person to walk through at a time. You either put your forehead on the side, or you put your face on the side as you enter. I don't know if you saw that one, but I think that one is...
I saw two. Yeah, not the third one.
That would be the third one. I think that one was actually piloted in the Ed Center this last week. And it worked, but it's much slower. It's one person at a time.
So that's the ISI, okay.
We would like to use both of them depending on the entrance. Like, you know, Jerry, Mr. Shi, at JP, that main entrance, you can get a lot of students coming in at one time. And we want to be able to catch as many students as we can at one time. And then maybe for some of the other entrances, maybe we're staff use or less traffic, have one of the other ones there. So we still check everyone, but we don't have a bottleneck at the front of the school.
Well, it looks like the bid we sent out is to buy 75 of those units. So we're looking at a million dollars on this.
Well, we're not going to necessarily purchase 75. We put that bid out there to make sure they were able to get them 75 units to our schools by September 1st. So we didn't want to say, you know, we're going to award it tonight to one particular company and all of a sudden they say, ah, we can only get you five, because five, you know, five doesn't work for us, the district as large as ours.
Yeah, because we're looking at a million dollars here. So can we just go out and say, hey, we like to do a lease? Because, you know, once this thing, I hope this thing will be over very soon, you know? After six months, we have a million dollars sitting in our hand. Unless Ralph goes out and sells these stuff at a second-handed price, we can't get any money back on this.
Yeah, I know. That's my concern too. I think Elizabeth has some, Elizabeth, go ahead.
My question is, how long has something like this been around?
Probably a month or two.
So you're talking about new technology and we're sinking a million dollars. And what is the minimum of items that we would have to get? Basically, if we're talking about one at the main entrance and then a couple at the side entrance, you know, what are we talking about? Is it closer to, you know, a million dollars or what is it? And who's actually going to be enforcing this? Because I'm just thinking of the number of students that can get into JP Stevens. Who figures out, okay, out of the 30 kids that just walked in, which one was the one that set it off? So, you know...
As with anything, Mrs. Conway, you're right. I don't think we'd any, the number that we looked at would be 57 units across the entire district. That's some of the cheaper ones and some of the larger ones. We haven't found out exactly which would go where, but like anything with technology and security, you have to have people there. So someone has to monitor those screens for if there is someone who's identified as having a temperature or not wearing a mask, they get pulled aside to get temperature screened more closely with a handheld.
And who would they be utilizing for that?
It's either going to be administrators, staff personnel that are assigned those duties. Someone has to be there. The people that would normally be there in the mornings when school comes and goes.
I'm just concerned, because it's not a lease agreement, that what do we have, should it not work after the 28th day?
They might have, they might have some warrant there, yeah.
What kind of guarantee are they giving us? What do they see as the lifespan of some of these? Do we know all these answers?
Off the top of my head, off the top of my head, I don't.
Yeah, but I would like some kind of insurance. It seems like, no, you have to buy it. We're not going, because we don't want it back. But it's like any of the machines that use for the specialized tests when you go to a hospital. Those are all leased because there's always upgrades. You know, if this is something that we're going to have and we don't know how long we're going to be using it, are we going to use it for a month? Are we going to use it for six years? We don't know. But the idea is, you know, what do we have after it gets into our building? It's not as-is. If you bought, you know, bought a car and it was as-is and you drove it around the corner and the engine fell out. What kind of insurance do we have? You know, what kind of warranty, guarantee are they giving us since they're not willing to give us a lease?
Yeah, and I would just add on top of that is, you know, if something breaks down, how quickly can they replace it, right? So if, let's say, you know, we decide to go back to school and something broke down, you need a second day. Can, how quickly can they fill that? If they're ordering from somewhere else, do they have enough in stock to handle that? And the other thing, sorry, yeah, Ralph. When I saw, when we were setting this thing up in the educational office, there also, there's a monitor as well. So that's a regular TV. Is that part of the price or the monitor thing, it's a separate thing that we have to buy?
I think it came as a package. I mean, Mr. Barker put together the specs, went over that, but, and so, I'm not sure. I don't want to give you a wrong answer on that. But in answer to Mrs. Conway's question, expectation would be the same with any technology that we buy, right? If I get a computer or a phone book and we get it and we open it up, it doesn't work, we send it back. And the expectation is going to be replaced and repaired. I mean, standard operating procedure is a year. Everything is warranted for a year that we would purchase. And that would be our expectation moving forward here. The availability of replacement parts, I can't speak to that. I don't know that. I mean, but one of the stipulations we made in the RFP was that if we're going to award this contract for this amount, we're not necessarily saying how many we're going to get. They have to be here by September 1. If they're not, we don't pay them. But they're good concerns. I don't know how long this is going to last. For the future, moving forward, we may use this type of thing indefinitely in schools, even after this initial pandemic is over. I don't know that.
Well, that's another thing that, you know, Ken, you know, Mr. Barker is on the phone. Did the monitor included in this or it's a separate?
No, it's all inclusive. There's a monitor, there's an NVR which will record the incident and the cameras. So it's all inclusive. And it's going to be installed, so it's not going to be any moving parts. So it'll be like a camera, like a security camera in the hallway.
So how big is the monitor? Because when, well, when I walked in the education office, I think we had a 50-inch monitor. So we're not going to put a 50-inch monitor for this in every entrance, right?
Well, we could. It depends. It doesn't have to be in the entrance. It could be for security guards.
Yeah, well, okay.
And that's one thing that internally we're working on as far as logistics, as far as where to place it. And every school may be a little different because the configuration of the schools are a little different. So like in the high school, we have an area for security guards. We might put the monitor there for them. So as kids walk in, if one kid or one adult or whomever is flagged with a high temperature, they're actually, their picture for a moment will be on the screen.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then internal policies and protocols will take over.
Yeah, so my question is, you know, I don't want to continue to beat on this topic is, you know, if they, if, I don't know, I'll quote, did we specify this has to be like 24 inches or it's 55 inches, right? So there's a big difference on the price. If we're just putting a computer screen size, you know, 24-inch monitor for all security people, the price is going to be lower. If the spec is 55-inch, like what we did in the Ed Center, that's going to incur more money. So when we put out the specs, did we specify what are we looking for? They say, yeah, they will, I'll give you a monitor, but I'll give you, you know, a 9-inch monitor so you could barely see it.
Now, actually, you'd be able to see clarity as well. And today, with the cost of monitors, a 55-inch is, the cost of a 55-inch monitor is, you know, in the scheme of things, not very expensive nowadays. So they're definitely going to give us a quality setup because that's what they presented as far as the demos. And the multiple vendors came with the same type of monitor to the Ed Center. So now, we spent quite a bit of time looking at these different products. So, and that's where we put out the bid. We wanted to get the best possible, you know, product, and that's why we put out the bid.
So what is the bid for the monitors? Hey, you need to supply a monitor. Is that what the bid is?
Well, it's part of the solution, right? There's a camera, there's an NVR, there's a monitor. That's all the solution. That's what we asked for. We didn't ask specifically. We asked for a solution.
Alright, so they're going to give you the smallest monitor they can have then?
I don't believe that, but we could follow up with the vendor, absolutely. We could get exact specs.
So I just had a couple of questions. So when you have somebody's face show up on the screen and the screen freezes for a moment so you know which kid might have high temperature, is there also an alarm trigger? So that the monitor is easy, like somebody doesn't have to keep looking at the screen, but then there's an alarm vent to look at the screen?
There'll be a quiet alarm in a sense that it won't notify the other people walking, but the person watching the monitor will be notified.
Okay, and my second question is, so on average for elementary and middle schools, like, do we know yet how many students would be attending the school per day?
We don't have those exact numbers yet, but when we surveyed the parents, we got 14,700 responses so far. And I want to say it was close to 27% of parents would elect to come to school every day if they were permitted to do so. So if that number remains, we still have to contact the other 2,500 or so parents who did not respond. If that number remains consistent, those students can come to school every day, five days a week. So we have to decide which parents are in which school, you know, which students in which school, and make sure all those numbers work. So I don't have that exactly for you yet, but if you took that average, so 25% approximately at JP Stevens would be approximately 25% of 2,600 students, right? So much, much more reduced number than what's coming now that we would be coming to the buildings.
No, I was just asking from the point of... No, I was just asking from the point of, uh, if it's an elementary school and if it's not as many students. Then rather than getting this machine that kind of automatically scans, if we have like five of those kiosks. If that might be more efficient, just kind of a thought, just throwing it out there.
That's a good thought. That might be one of the options. We're not committing to what machines to go and where yet. We had, we, we, we asked for a large number to make sure they could accommodate if we need be. We're going to do exactly what you said, Mrs. Madabur. For the buildings, we reduce traffic. These people will get the lower machines because it won't, it won't impact the, uh, the flow of people coming in and out. We're going to do exactly that. Get the cheapest option of the two that we have there across all the buildings. Yet still try to be somewhat efficient.
So, so we are committed if, if just to, you know, piggyback on what Shivi said. If we find out for a certain school that's low traffic, let's use a word term. We are, we can, we are, we will be looking into the other device which is much cheaper.
Correct. Yes, absolutely. And even in the bigger.
So, so do you, do you need approval on that?
We're, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, we're approving the price tonight, not the number of machines.
That's correct.
So the price, if the board agrees to those two options is. We must collect the ones that we need to cover the buildings in the, in the least, the least cost way and also the most efficient way.
And, and the price we approved today would be kind of an outer limit and we could spend much less than that. And we'll try to do that. Obviously, keep keeping the safety of students in mind and the teachers.
Well, it's the price per unit is what we see. We just don't know how many units of each.
Correct.
Yeah, so we, we just, so we just approve like an out limit that we're not going to spend more than this. But the actual expenditure could be much less depending on the combination we pick up in terms of kiosks versus. You know, these scanners are, that's what I'm understanding.
Well, can we, can we do this instead of, you know, approving on a per unit price on thirteen hundred? Can we approve a upper limit of how much this, this is going to be? And let's see if we can have other options like leases and stuff. So we, you don't have to have another meeting to, to, to approve it. You know, because seven, you know, these fifty-seven, you know, units times thirteen, that's, that's way over a million dollars. But that's a lot of money to, to spend if it's only six months and, and, you know.
That's if.
There's no residual value, yeah.
Jerry, if we, as if we buy all the expensive ones?
Yeah.
Okay, but we're going to buy a combination of each, I think.
Correct.
So hopefully, again, we're still spending a lot of money, no matter how you look at it.
Correct.
Hopefully, we could get those numbers in each of the schools and, and get the cheaper units for the smaller. You know, student attending schools and, you know, try to save some money. But again, like I think Dr. Bregan said and Dan said, we're only approving the price tonight. I would like Dan to give the guy a call tomorrow and see how long the lead time is and when's the last possible day we could order anything, if anything. And then we go from there. Hold on. Yes.
Yeah, I just have, I just a point of clarification because I'm looking at the way that the resolution is worded. And I hear a lot of flexibility, but the way that I see the resolution, it says. That you would be awarding to Service Works for thirteen thousand oh four seven seventy-two per unit.
Right.
I didn't see a, a range of units. Is, is this a series of different types of units? With the max of thirteen oh four seven seventy-two?
No, there's two different bids, two different units. We may go with the eighteen ninety-five units and the thirteen thousand dollar units.
Yeah, my concern is though, the language on that said it was a non-responsive bid.
Yeah, because we, we did bid the wide area one and they gave us the kiosk. But that one did not meet the specs.
Right.
So can we go, go, can we go back to them? Ask, ask them, the wide area one, do they have it?
Oh, that's, that's the only one they had because when they, when the specifications were very clear on what we were looking for. And they thought they would come in with those and that we might opt to go with that, but our specs didn't, didn't read that way.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the prices.
Resolution that you're actually awarding so much to ISI and so much to Service Works?
There's no, no, Service Works is out. The ISI is out based on the resolution written.
But aren't that, isn't that the smaller one that you initially were talking about using for less traffic areas?
Yeah, yeah. But if, if you approve the, yeah, if you approve the, the resolution as it is. The, the, the lower price ones out.
But that, would that, would that, would that limit us to not ordering the smaller ones?
No, that would not exclude us from doing that. As long as I don't go over the bid limit with the, with the smaller ones, fine.
Right.
Okay, so we could order the smaller ones even though it's written this way?
So long as it doesn't go over the bid threshold, yes.
Correct.
So can I just ask a quick related question? So once a student is identified as having high temperature, do we do that? Do we kind of isolate kids around that kid also or what do we do? Or, or we'll discuss this later on at the next meeting?
Discuss that. But we do have a for that, for, for staff.
All right, any more questions on this resolution?
No, but could you just explain it one more time, Dan? The resolution as is is just awarding to the.
Service Works for thirteen thousand dollar unit if we want to purchase those and there's no limit. We, we did put in a bid that we anticipated was fifty-seven, but we did make it very flexible. That we can call how many we want to order. And that's why I didn't want to put fifty-seven on the resolution. We just put down a unit price, so we now have the ability to order as many as we need or as few as we need.
Okay, now what about when you were discussing the smaller one? That was going to be utilized in a less trafficked area?
Yes.
Isn't, is that the one from ISI?
Yes.
Well, then this resolution as written is only taking into Service Works Inc.
Right, but I'm allowed to order from anyone as long as I don't exceed the bid limit of forty-four thousand. So that eighteen ninety-five, I could order, I could still order like twenty of them and still be fine.
What's the limit, forty-four?
Forty-four thousand.
Okay.
And we also have a couple of other companies. Well, actually, one sent me very, right after we opened this bid. That they missed the bid and they gave, they sent me some information. They're part of the PEPM Federal Cooperative, also for the kiosks. So I would have a second quote because if I go over sixty-six hundred, I need a second quote. I could use that one as the quote.
Okay. All right, anything else on this particular question?
So, so, so can, can we adjust this out of fly and just put it out there? To approve of a total dollar amount not to exceed?
Or whatever, fifty-seven thou, fifty-seven units times.
Somewhere on there, yeah.
Yeah, so seven hundred and fifty thousand. Can we amend the resolution during that, Hope?
Yes, how many, how many would be used at the entrance to JP Stevens?
We don't know any, any.
I don't know any.
I don't know, just fifty-seven seemed like quite a bit.
Well, it's up to.
We have, you have, you have twenty buildings, right? So including S center.
We don't have to do fifty-seven. It could be less.
Absolutely. We're hoping to do less or a combination of the cheaper ones. All right.
Can I just, a total, total spending, you know, including the cheap ones, not, you know.
Right.
Not, not to exceed.
So when we go to vote, I need someone to make a motion to amend the, uh, bid to not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand.
A, a motion.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that when we take a vote.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right, Dan, next.
Okay, next item. Every year we have to send to the county office any school rooms. That we plan on using for dual use. Uh, so this is the list that we have. And I did talk to Mr. Siler over JM, JP Stevens, I mean, uh, James Madison Primary. Because on here you can see he has one that says toilet room facilities. It's not, it's not, it's not a bathroom that there's dual use. The reason why it has that on there is because room number twenty-six, he may have to use for a kindergarten room. Kindergarten rooms are supposed to have bathrooms in it. And we have gotten a variance in the past for that. There's a bathroom right outside in the hallway, right outside that room. But we need to get approval because that's a substandard classroom for a kindergarten. Okay, so we just need the board approval to send, so we can send this down to the county office. And they may or may not send some of their facilities to people to come up and take a look at these rooms and make sure that they're apropos for instruction. They do it every year.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, great, Jerry.
Yeah, so given that we are not going to have as many students and only twenty, twenty-six percent of the students in the schools. So what's the reason to still seek these additional spaces? Don't, don't we have enough for those, for the twenty-six percent coming into school?
Well, we may at the beginning of the year, but as more and more kids come, if, I don't want to do this in the middle of the year. If I get approval at the beginning of the year, when that does happen and we get all the kids back. I will already have had approval for these rooms. Otherwise, I got to do it before we get the kids back.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, okay.
So, Jerry, Dan, quick question. So for, why are Woodbrook Gym and Cafeteria? This is in the same categories because these are, these are new, uh, new rooms and, and the library of GMI.
You're on mute, you're on mute, Dan. Dan, you're on mute.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what, what other classes are having in there, but they are definitely going to use those rooms. Or may, may need to use those rooms for, for maybe for a health class or some other kind of class. That they normally, maybe they don't have a room for that or something. I'm not sure what's the reason. I didn't discuss each one of them with them. Uh, but those are, all this has given them is the opportunity to use those spaces, educational spaces.
Yeah, I understand, but you know, all these others, they are trailers, right? Except this, the Jimmy Woodbrook Cafe, those are new. And the library in JMI. I, I assume that library is not in the, um. In, in a trailer, but you know, I don't know if we have anyone who, um. You know, I, I don't know if anyone who's, who's on, on a call, who's from the school can, can, can help.
I could answer that. Some, what we're bringing for, we do this on an annual basis. It's non-traditional classroom spaces that at portions of the day are used as instructional spaces. I was principal at JMI. We actually use that. For some of the health instruction. That's not a traditional classroom space, so we have to get permission. I would imagine the same thing at Woodbrook with their cafeteria and the gymnasium. That there are times during the day that they use those instructional spaces. It gives the district flexibility to do so that, from a non-traditional classroom environment. I know we've done that in the past and other places. So that's my, that's what I think it is. I think, Dan, we've done this almost every year.
Every year. We have to do it every summer, correct.
And we have to.
Most of the time it's the same rooms.
Correct.
Yep. Now, these are not trailers, by the way, Jerry. Uh, number four, the next one is the trailers. These are considered to be dual-use classrooms. The next one, trailers are considered to be substandard classrooms. We have to have approval for those also.
That's the next page?
Yeah, the next resolution is for the substandard classrooms and you'll note there are all the trailers that we have at the schools.
Oh, these are, oh, these are the physical, okay, I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood that. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any questions on both of those approvals? Uh, hold on, make sure Liz don't have her hand up. Nope, she don't. Thank you. All right.
All right, next one. You know, we got the CARES Act money was a million sixty-eight thousand. The federal government now has given us the opportunity to get another grant as part of the CARES Act. But it's called a digital divide grant. It's an amount of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. The only caveat to that, because I already talked to our new grants person about this, because I wanted to see if we could charge off those thermal monitors to this. But unfortunately, this one is limited to handheld devices for the kids. And I'm, I'm asked her if she can go back on the CARES Act, because we, don't forget, we charged off, uh, over six hundred thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks. In that grant. I was seeing, I want to see if we can go back and amend that one. Maybe we charge the monitors to that grant, which was for all COVID-related expenses. And then charge off the iPads or the Chromebooks to this grant. I don't know if we can do it or not. She's sent it out for me now. But we do need the board to approve the submittal of this app, this application and acceptance of the grant, the grant funds of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand.
So Dan, question. So the one that we just talked about, these thermal monitors, should that be part of, part of this? They're digital?
Well, that's what I asked her. I asked.
That's like a seven fifty.
Yeah, I asked her that question, but she said unfortunately, this one is limited to handheld devices for the kids for remote learning.
Like a what?
Like, like iPads, Chromebooks, things like that.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I want to trade off, if I can, if I'm allowed to, the CARES Act money, which was for COVID-related expenditures. For this one and then charge off the Chromebooks to this one and use the monitors against the other, the other one million sixty-eight thousand. So she's looking for that for me now. If that's a possibility, we can do that.
All right, so if we get this money, what, what's a total we, we, we're getting?
Uh, it'll be close to two million dollars, one million sixty-eight thousand, one, one oh seven of it, of which goes to the non-public schools. So you got, you got about nine fifty on both of them, so it's close to, close to two million dollars total.
Okay.
How much of the previous money did we spend already?
Well, so far I've, I've requested a refund or, well, don't forget, this, a lot of this money we've already spent. So this is going back on some of the things. The iPads we just ordered, so we didn't get them yet. But two hundred and twenty-seven thousand is what I've spent so far to this, to date and asked for a re, reimbursement from the federal government.
So you still have about six hundred and fifty?
Say it again?
So you still have about six hundred and fifty thousand on the previous grant left?
Yeah, but it's, but it's already encumbered. It hasn't been received or paid for yet. I can't ask for a refund until I pay for it. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand of it was already paid for and received. That's what I asked for reimbursement for. We do have a six hundred, I think it was six hundred and eighty-nine thousand for Chromebooks. We didn't receive them yet. We didn't pay for them, so I can't ask for reimbursement on that yet.
But Dan, I think the question was from the first CARES Grant Act that we got, almost nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We encumbered that entire amount.
We encumbered just about all of it. Yes, correct.
Oh, so you spent all of it. Okay.
Yeah, we encumbered.
Exactly, we put the money out, but we encumbered it. And a large portion of that, as Mr. Michelle said, was for. The Chromebooks that we needed to get, so all the students had the one-to-one devices. That we're trying to see if we can get that reimbursement switched to this new grant. Which would then qualify for one-to-one devices in students' hands, but then the thermal cameras we could then use for the previous one. If we can do that, these thermal cameras will have a zero net cost to, uh, to our budget. Because this is, this is monies that we didn't expect or anticipate that we would get from the federal government. Is that correct, Mr. Michelle?
That's correct.
Dan, did you ever hear of the HEAL Act, H-E-A-L Act? It's supposedly a safety grant that's being reviewed in the state. To help the districts with safety items. Would that be considered under a safety item?
I don't, I'm not sure how mu, I didn't, I never heard about the HEAL Act yet, but I don't know which one we're entitled to with that one. Uh, but I would think that these would be considered for health and safety.
Yeah, they considered it a safety grant and.
We could have the grant person look into it.
Coming from the New Jersey School Insurance Group?
Oh, that one? Oh, yeah, that, that one, we get that one, this is the first year we're getting it. We just went back to them last year. That's only eighty-seven thousand dollars. What they do is the premium, they're, they're a nonprofit organization. So after premiums are covered and there's, it pays the claims out, whatever's left, they give to the participating districts. Based on their premiums, and we're the biggest one, so we get the most. And we got an eighty-seven thousand dollar grant for that. And Mr. Kassane has already encumbered for radios and, and things like that for safety.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we're all set with that one. Okay. All right, uh, next one. Okay, I don't remember, uh, the next item is the, uh, I'm happy to say one of our bigger vendors. We have two big ones, as you know, Barker and Dapper. Barker accepted the sixty percent finally. This resolution is, is memorializing their acceptance of the sixty percent. And then, of course, after the board approves the sixty percent payment to them, then they have to sign off on it, that they'll accept the sixty in full payment. And then at least Barker will be finished. Dapper is still holding out. That's our biggest contractor. Dapper has nine hundred, a hundred and ninety-four routes right now. And that's the one I'm concerned about because that's well over half our routes. And we will, she did not, did not accept the, the one point seven yet. She did not accept the sixty percent yet. We're, we're still talking to her about it. I talked to her as, as late as today. And she's now considering letting the, uh, order to take a look at her books, which is one of the stipulations of the, of giving her more than sixty. Uh, but that's not stone yet. So as soon as we get that one done, we will then let, fill you in on what's going on. But at least this is where we have Barker covered. And if need be, and we go out to bid for all of Dapper's routes. Barker is ready now to take on some of the additional routes.
Good.
Okay.
All right.
And then. Go ahead, go ahead, finish it up. I, I just thought about something. Yeah, finish up. Sorry, Dan. Yeah.
All right, the last item is the renewal of all the bus companies we currently deal with. Accepting the one point seven percent increase, which includes Barker and, and Volani. Even Volani didn't accept the sixty percent. They will come back with one point seven. This includes Durham and Road to Success. All the ones that accepted sixty percent. Will renew their routes next year for one point seven, which relieves, I'm very relieved about. And of course, the other thing is, are we going to need buses in the some, in, in. And of course, the other thing is, are we going to need buses in September? We anticipate, based on what Dr. Bragan's talking about, even if we only have 26% of the kids, we still need to transport those kids. So we will need these routes. So we need to have the board approve it, because I can't wait till the next meeting. That's, that's only giving the vendors about a week to get ready, and they'll, they'll never be ready in a week. So if I give them enough notice, they will be ready for the opening of school.
So, quick question, quick question. This table that you've given with says root cost, is it like per day, per hour, per student? What is it, like $197?
These are daily amounts, these are 180 days. It's based on 180-day school year. So these numbers would, if you want to get the annual amount, just multiply by 180. But we do it on a daily basis. So we tried, we're trying to make sure that if we're not open, might not have to worry about paying them, even though I know some of them already said, I'll renew as long as you guarantee me that if you don't open next year, I get 60% again next year. Which if we don't go that route, they may be forced out of business, but we'll deal with that when the time comes.
Jerry, you had something?
Yeah, I just, sorry, I keep going back to this monitor question. So, Dan, we join a lot of counties, which you called cooperatives, right? So I would assume the other school district will be also needing this. So we are not getting anything from the cooperative. We're going out on our own. But usually, you know, we can get it from those, because it's a large volume. We have a, you know, better, better price.
Well, don't forget, with those cooperatives, those are because they already went out to bid down these things. These are so new, I don't know if they've done that yet.
Okay.
For the bidding process, it'd be awarded by those cooperatives before we can actually take advantage of those. And I'm anticipating the fact that these are so new that that didn't happen yet. Because we did ask these vendors, do you, are you part of a cooperative? Because we, instead of bidding, if we can go that route, it saves us a lot of time and money. So that's the way we would like to have gone, but none of them were part of any cooperative at this point.
Well, the cooperative is too slow, because I'm pretty sure a lot of schools are needing this one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on any resolutions? So we're going to move to the public comments. Okay, all right, so, public. I know people have been typing in questions, and I'm not sure if you've attended previous meetings. We can't answer, we cannot answer those to, because it would create a noise, a typing sound. So if you want to ask any questions, you may come and raise your hand virtually, and I'll call on you. I'm going to remind everyone that you have six minutes. I'm going to remind everyone to be respectful. And I'm going to remind everyone that if you're not, I will drop you. And we will have no campaigning whatsoever. So once you mention that you're running for the board, or you're running for this or that, you will be dropped. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware upfront. All righty, so let me look at my participation list, Ralph. Let's see here. All right, Matt Hervenek is the first one. Go ahead, Matt.
Hello, Val, and board members, can you hear me?
Yes, name and address.
Hey, Matt Revnak, Toethel Road, JP Stevens High School ETA Vice President. So I just want to say I appreciate the discussion about the cameras, and I thought every one of you brought up very valid points. The one thing about the cameras, you know, as you're probably familiar with right now, there is a bill out there to possibly even go remote until October 31st. Regardless of whether that happens or not, at some point down the road, once we get back to school, the cameras will not go to waste. I'm assuming you'd want them in at that point. And even moving forward, as you guys were talking, I thought about, we know that there's a number of parents, for example, send their kids. I've had my own students say, I woke up this morning, I was feeling ill by the end of first period during the nurse's walk.
Matt, you're dropping out, Matt.
We're losing you, Matt.
Okay, we still have things like seasonal flu and things like that, where kids come in feverish. So the cameras themselves, I think, obviously a lease would be great. Under current circumstances, I don't know if any company, when they can profit by selling, would even, you know, think about leasing things like that. But I do agree that as technology improves, it'd be nice to be able to turn them over. I think obviously some things that you guys discussed was, you know, again, what is the life expectancy of these things? If they break down, Mr. She brought it up. All very good discussion, and I think it's all things that need to be looked at. But again, you know, I don't think in any case, any money spent here will go to waste, because at some point, whether we're virtual, the governor changes mind and makes it totally remote, at some point we'll be returning and the other thing I just want to emphasize again to people is, you know, while this is created as a protective measure, there will be students and staff in those buildings that potentially could have something that don't want to fever. There's fear for temperature taste. Again, I noticed and with, you know, my dad had no signs and symptoms at all when he tested positive. So, you know, that's something else to, you know. And I thought we mentioned about the next meeting addressing about what happens if someone falls out or they do have an elevated temperature. You know, what the circumstances on that. And even in terms of isolating those students, you may have obviously elevated temperatures for different reasons. Just elevated temperatures or whatever. It's very difficult to even to the protection of each of the students as well. So obviously, I'm an advocate for but safety has to be most concerned for everyone. All right, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Matt. All right, up next, we have Ms. Campione. Name and address, Ms. Campione.
Hi, everyone, Sue Campione, H. Chiford Court in Edison. So I just wanted to mention, because of personal experiences, that one of the questions you might want to ask these companies is the sensitivity of the scanners. Because I had the experience, my daughter did and my son did, going to doctors and for haircuts, where I had had to sit in the car, like to go to the eye doctor, and then I registered a temperature and had to wait for it to come down. My daughter had been outside for several hours, and even though she rode in an air-conditioned car, she still registered a pretty high temperature. And my son had to walk to an eye doctor, and they wouldn't even see him. They told him to go get a COVID test. None of us were sick, none of us had COVID. But these kids, if they walk to school or they're running around, like in elementary school, they run around before, when they get dropped off and are coming in. So, or to think about what the protocols are going to be, you could have half of the kids registering a temperature that do not have COVID and are not sick. It's just because they're overheated. And, you know, people think that, oh, that you don't run a temperature because of that, but you do. So that's something to think about, or maybe ask these companies about, you know, the sensitivity, because you could have half of those kids coming into school registering a temperature that are not sick, and then what you do with all of them. So just something to think about, because it happened to three of us. Thanks. Stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, up next is Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, welcome. Name and address, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Erika, and the rest of the board, Brett Baker, 140 Grandview Avenue. Just wanted to ask a question. I joined a little bit late, but just wanted to see if I could get a little bit more of the, of the reason behind. I appreciate the move to a to-not-exceed resolution related to those monitors, but $13,000 is a pretty expensive monitor, when you seem to have another option that's like $1,000. And I'm just a little surprised we don't have like a firm number across the district of how many units we need. And just curious, like, what is the process that we would go through to determine how many units we need?
Okay, that's it?
Sure.
All right, thank you, Brett. I think Dr. Bragan can answer, but I think the number that we come to will be based on the enrollment in each school, which we're tallying right now. Based on the numbers in each particular school, I would think the high schools would get at least one of those $13,000 units, both of them. And then depending on what we have in the middle and elementary schools, depending on numbers, we're going to try to go not as cheap as possible, but we're going to try to be frugal and not spend up to $750,000. But Dr. Bragan, if you want to answer that?
Yeah, thanks, Board President Erika. You pretty much hit the nail on the head, and that's a good question. Mr. Baker, that we're looking for the best option we have. We don't know the exact numbers of students in each, excuse me, in each school yet, because we don't have every parent's commitment to either be remote or to be in person. Once we get that, we'll make sure in each school, we'll know exactly how many students are anticipated to come back in September. If that is even going to come to fruition, as many people mentioned, there's a bill out there now to make it totally remote until at least the end of October, so we don't know. So, but we have to be prepared, and we're trying to prepare on the exact number. So we don't have the exact number, because we don't want to waste the board's money or the taxpayer's money, and we want to buy as lower number of these devices as we need to ensure the safest environment possible, and also to make it still somewhat efficient when we come and go into eageruses in each school. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jersey Watcher. Name and address, please.
Crystal Middlesex County, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I can't believe the way we started out this meeting, threatening the public that we're going to kick them out. I just want to remind the whole board, including you, and the lawyer can back me up on this. You can't restrict the content of speech during the public portion session.
Thank you.
That's number one. All right. I got a few questions, and then I got some statements, but here are the questions. What do you do with students that are dropped off and come up with a high temperature and you can't reach their parents? That's one of them. What are you going to do with kids that cannot wear a mask due to medical reasons? Americans with Disabilities Act. You know, you can't restrict them. You're going to get fined every single time you don't allow a kid in the school. Every student has a New Jersey constitutional right to be educated. What do you do when a multitude of students and teachers come down with flu or COVID? All right, now I'm moving down to my statements. I got, I have a letter here that was given to Dan. I guess Dan, who's Dan, the business administrator?
Correct.
All right, now this was written by town councilman, someone who's a town councilman, former Board of Education employee. I formally request that Jerry Shi be removed from the Facility and Finance Chair.
All right, what does that have to do with?
Public comments, Losman versus Riviera Beach, Florida. This has to do with the Board of Education. Please don't interrupt me. Jerry Shi is chairman of Facility and Finance.
He is not the chairman.
This was written when he was, sir. Can you please stop interrupting me? Jerry Shi is chairman of Facility and Finance, should have brought up the low rates of the Chinese school and asked us to vote on it according to Policy 75, page 2. 3, Dan has said, we vote and approve these rates every year in the policy. If true, and Jerry Shi voted on these, he needs to be investigated for ethics violations.
Hold on, one second.
Excuse me, Councilman Brescher wrote this letter. Can I finish reading?
Excuse me, excuse me. These comments are for the resolutions only at this point. If you want to come back at the end of the meeting and speak, that's fine. But these are resolutions only.
We're not on public?
Resolutions only. Resolutions only.
All right, so you're not going to kick me out of here? And then, and then you're going to end it without me being allowed to speak my public comments, are you?
We still have public comments at the end.
All right, well, since I got time, I'll just ask my questions now.
We got the questions. We got the questions. We'll answer those.
Sometimes, sometimes you kick me out and forget to answer one or two, so I don't mind staying on the line while you answer.
No, that's, that's okay. We'll answer them.
Superintendent Bragan, no, I'm not done yet. I'm not done.
You've already asked me questions.
Bragan, Superintendent Bragan at the last meeting. I had said at the last meeting, I said Governor Murphy.
All right, this has nothing to do with the resolutions. Ralph, drop them, please. He can come back. Thank you. Next up is Briar Vera. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it incorrectly. Name and address, please. Briar Vera?
Hi, Brian Rivera, 98 Stony Road. How are you, Ralph?
Oh, thank you.
A couple of questions. I was just following the dialogues. I actually posted all those questions on there. So you guys were talking about ordering all these machines in the high demand. So one of my questions, were you considering staggering the high school at all? So you're not clumped up with everybody coming over there? So that's one of my questions, because those are older kids, obviously. You could probably stagger them. Also, Dan, when you were talking about it, are those units in high demand? You know, is this something you want to talk to your business administrators? I know you guys got a little group together, a text group, you guys might want to talk about. Also, I was considering the procedures for students who do have a high temperature based on that machine. What are going to be the protocols? Is there an isolation room nearby? The last caller actually made a good point stating what happens if the child does come in and you can't get ahold of the parent. Also, I was curious about the funding to that, Dan, too, about the cost for all that. Is this existing funds or is this care funds? Again, we were also talking about the places. Again, I'm an administrator, obviously, so I agree with you, Dan, that we have to post those, those rooms are non-essential that we do use. My concern was with Lincoln School. I know it's an overcrowded building. I know they probably use every space humanly possible. I just want to make sure our kids have the best learning spaces available. And also, when it came to busing, too, Matouchin just gave up their busing. Do we want to use that as leverage? And is it a cost? Because from my understanding, some bus companies are trying to make districts pay for the cleaning. Are these companies doing that as well? And then I also want to say, make a couple of comments. I'm glad you guys addressed the fact of the inappropriate comments that were made last week. I think we're all in a professional setting, and I'm glad that you guys are being proactive in addressing that. I don't think that was fair that Mr. Shi's address was posted and somebody was making comments. I don't know Mr. Shi at all, but I wouldn't want my address posted and someone taking advantage of making comments like that. So I'm glad you guys addressed that. And I also wanted to make a comment about the hiring process. I listened to last comment. Mr. Bragan, I think your integrity is there. I don't think anybody has to really, I met you a few times in my conversations with you. I don't think there's an integrity issue there. Just wanted to make, I just wanted to say that to you, and I apologize that you even had to make that comment. And finally, I want to make one last comment about the Bragan. I share every document you send out to other administrators throughout the district. And I shared over a principal in another district. And the comment that he made was leadership with conviction. At least it exists somewhere. So I want to give you kudos for that, and kudos to your central administration and administrators. So keep up the good work, and I appreciate everything that all of you guys are doing on that panel.
Thank you. All right, if you could answer some of his questions, Dr. Bragan, and then we got to answer also Chris's questions. I'm sorry I skipped over that.
Okay, the one question about the start times, and thank you, Brian, for the comments about the start, staggered start times at the high school. If the numbers remain consistent at the high school, and we're going to get 25% on average of the students coming in, I don't think we need to do that. If at some point we move towards a hybrid model and all the students are coming in, whether for a portion of the day or every other day, we may have to consider those options at the larger schools, which could be the middle and high schools. But right now, we have not considered that. I don't think we need to do that. Those units that the cameras are definitely in high demand, and I give credit to Mr. Barker, our Chief Technology Officer. We've taught, we've had these conversations with Mr. Michelle months ago about the possibility to return and securing devices. And one of the reasons they're not on the cooperatives is because this is fairly new, and they haven't been out yet. So they are in extremely high demand, and we will work with the other administrators. I do want to believe we're out in front of this. I don't know what other people are doing. Mr. Barker's been working on this for months now, so I want to believe we're in front of that. If students come with a high temperature, I think this was Mr. Cristo's question as well. And they're identified as having a high temperature, they will be put in isolation room, and we will try to contact their parents and get them to come home. If not, we will keep them isolated from the rest of the community for as long as it takes to go through their emergency contact lists, as if we would if anyone got hurt or injured in school currently. So that would remain the same in that practice. I think Mr. Rivera asked about existing funds. We don't have a pool of money that's just sitting around waiting to purchase, you know, these cameras. So we're hopeful, as Mr. Michelle said, in being able to swap out some of the things we bought with the other CARES Grant for the devices that are actually going to the students' hands, switching those for this new grant that we got, that would cover the total cost of these cameras. If that works out, that's great. The busing question was also asked, and we're working on that now, as Mr. Michelle said. Some of the bus companies are looking to charge us additional fees for cleaning the buses each day. You saw those daily rates, as I think one of the, or two of the board members questioned whether those numbers, that's for the daily routes. But some of them are asking for as much as $50 to $60 in addition to that. But some of them are asking for as much as $50 to $60 in addition to that to clean the buses each day. Um, we think that's exorbitant and we think that is taking advantage of a situation. But when when all said and done at the end of this, and you know, Mr. Baden, the association president, I had conversations about this. At some point, this pandemic's going to be over. And we're going to get back to some semblance of normal, whatever that may look like in a post-coronavirus world. And we're going to need transportation. And we're going to need coaches and we're going to need all these other things. So we don't want to necessarily get rid of transportation or make all these enemies. At some point, hopefully over the course of this year, we'll get back to somewhat of a regular schedule. We'll do the 417 bus routes. And there's not one company that we know of right now that can do all those routes for our subscription buses as well as our remote transportation. So we're doing our best we can to be fiscally responsible, to work with all the bus companies and to keep that relationship there, because I do believe at some point this is going to pass, hopefully over the course of this school year, whether that means, um, the virus peters out on its own or there's a a vaccine widely available. Transportation needs to be there, we need to be there, and and we're too large to do it on our own. I think I answered all those questions, uh, for President Eriko, I don't know if I missed one from the previous caller. I think I got them all.
Yes, I think you answered them all. The only one I made is about the many cases, and that's going to be discussed at the next meeting, mask, ADA. If a student obviously has a doctor's note that they can't wear a mask, they won't have to wear a mask.
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, let's see who's up next. Again, remember callers that we're talking about resolutions only at this point. Uh, next up is Wolfie. Name and address, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, yeah, Wolfie Richmond, 29 Plaski Drive.
I drop him, Ralph. That's my address, thank you, have a good night. All right, that's it. Um, that's it for public comment, thank you. Um, so next we have board member comments.
I just have one quick comments, I forgot. So, uh, Dan, when you're talking about these care funds for the, um, the Chromebooks and stuff, I I think, uh, Mrs. Conway mentioned at one of the, uh, meetings that, um, some of the teachers probably need to upgrade on their devices, uh, can these CARE Acts cover that kind of a purchase or the? You you did mention this is only for students, I just want to be clear, is that, was it, if we buy something for the staff just due to the the pandemic, is that covered by the the CARE Act or no?
I think the first one, anything we needed to purchase for the, to for the remote learning.
Yeah.
Could include the staff, I think, I think the second one is specifically for students.
Okay. So, but did we purchase, because, you know, um, Mrs. Conway had a good point that that, I forgot what the committee was, I think it was the Return to School Committee meeting, she brought that up. Um, can we, you know, purchase additional and resubmit additional things for for them if we if we need it? Or or that money is already it, yeah, you you cannot submit anymore.
Well, the original CARES Act is the one I asked our new grants person to go back and see if we can amend.
Okay.
I could pull out that $600,000 we did in the Chromebook, put it into the second one, open up some funds for the first one, which will be for any COVID-related.
Yeah, okay.
Allowed to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So just just follow up on that. Um, anything that you get for the teachers is actually essentially for the students only, if you're giving all these devices to the teachers, then, you know, they're only be, uh, going to be able to help the students. So can't that justification be made, uh, to use that money for upgrading whatever technology the teachers have?
Uh, I'm pretty sure our teachers have some device now, but, uh, if upgrading them to something better, I would think that the first CARES Act would would be allowed to use that for that purpose.
But not the second one?
Second one, I, from what I'm being told, strictly for students.
Okay.
I kind of agree with, uh, Shivi that the upgraded equipment would be to the benefit for the students because the programs that the teachers would be using would be, um, expanded in order to give proper education because, uh, at this point, the Chromebooks are kind of limited as to the wide, um, diversity of programs that they're able to use. So ultimately, the children will benefit by purchasing those, uh, additional, um, pieces for the teachers.
We could look into that, Mr. Michelle, we'll talk to Maria Lopez, our supervisor assessments and grants, and we'll see if we we can do that, if we can make that justification, we will.
Okay. Any other board comments at this point?
This is.
Right, Carol? I'm sorry, Carol, anything from you? No, okay, no, I'm guessing that's, no, I'm reading lips.
Ralph, is this on resolutions only?
No, this is, uh, board member comments, we're done, oh, we got, oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get to voting, we have to vote, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so let's vote. Um, on resolutions, uh, one through, I guess, seven.
We need, we need to amend that, right, Ralph, we need to amend that, so, yeah.
Yeah, so let's vote on number one, uh, let's vote on, uh, let's vote on one, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Okay.
Can we have a motion?
A motion for that?
Jerry and Elizabeth. Roll call, Dan.
Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
All carried.
They're ready. Um, now, on number two, the bid for thermal temperature monitoring solutions, Mr. Shi, can you amend that, please, make a motion?
Yeah, can I have a motion to amend as we discussed it not to exceed, you know, 750, so give us some flexibility on that? So hope is that is that good enough or? Okay.
I think that's good enough, can we have a second?
Second.
Beth, okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
That's for the amendment, correct?
Yes, yes, to the amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, now we have open board member comments.
Excuse me, uh, you now need to vote on, you voted to amend, now you need to vote on the item.
Okay, now we need to, Mr. Shi?
Yeah, motion, motion to to, yeah, to carry.
And Beth, and Beth.
Yes, yes.
Same, okay.
Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Okay, well said, thank you.
All right, now we have open board member comments, uh, Carol, anything?
Um, I'm just glad that we did amend that public comments part of the policy because I think if people understand that what we say or we stop them from saying, um, is based on our policy, which is based on the law, and that's what it is, it's not, uh, Ralph or Bernie or someone else telling, not letting them speak, it is the law is interpreted by the lawyers that is stated in our policy, and that's what we're trying to follow. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Maroni, you have your hand up?
Yes. Um, I wanted to say that I'm very happy to see that so many people stepped up and put in applications to run for the Board of Ed, I believe there's 13 people. Um, but I I want to encourage each of those people who are running to really examine inside what it is that, you know, why it is that they want to be on the board. And along with that, um, I just want to let the public know what a Board of Education member does. Um, and we do not get paid for anything that we do. Um, so bear with me, there's a a few things here that I just want to touch on. First of all, we negotiate with four different unions. Last night, uh, Ralph and I were, um, at the, uh, transportation negotiations and we started out at four o'clock and we ended four hours later. And sometimes those kinds of negotiations go very deep into the night. Of course, we answer to the public with the many phone calls and emails that we get. We attend school events such as the National Honor Society induction, the plays that are given at each of the schools, concerts, sporting events, graduation, Read Across America, and programs like Martin Luther King Program at Ben Franklin. So, uh, we are invited to so many, many wonderful things where we get to see the children, uh, participate. But, um, it's a lot, and obviously we can't make everything, but many, many of us do make as as many things as we can. There are a number of committees and each of us usually serve on at least two or three. So we have the Finance and Facilities Committee, Transportation Personnel Policies, Curriculum and Technology, Finance and Facilities, Food Service, Special Education, um, and also committees that come up that are not regular committees, but like the Return to School Committee has come up. So many times, uh, some, and a need comes up and we form a committee for that. In our board meetings, aside from talking about personnel matters, we, uh, sometimes hear grievances uh, from various unions. And, uh, once in a while, some of us even have to go to court on a lawsuit. Um, also, a couple of the things that are perks for us is we get to go to convention in Atlantic City, New Jersey School Boards, um, convention, although this year we will not be having that unfortunately. Um, and we get wonderful training at New Jersey School Boards Convention, including four mandatory classes that Board of Education members have to make one each year. Um, and in the, in those classes, we learn about the sunshine laws and the kinds of ethics that a Board of Education member has to abide by. So I I just felt that it was time with so many people running, um, to touch on what it is exactly that a Board of Education member does, thank you.
Elizabeth, anything?
Uh, just, I just have a quick question of hope that, uh, let's slip by. On the policy, when someone, uh, gets up to speak and they give their name, do they actually have to give their address or can they just say, uh, Elizabeth Conway, uh, from Edison?
You don't have to give your full address, but you must not use a false address.
Because, uh, in the policy, it had name and municipality. So I wasn't sure if they actually had to give, uh, my famous 20 Netherwood Circle for 30 years. But we just got into that, uh, habit of doing it, so I wasn't sure, um, if we should even get into, uh, the address, which now, uh, unknown people are, uh, taking advantage of.
Yeah, as as I said, you may, you may give a, um, you know, a a broader address, but you may not give a knowingly false address.
Thank you. Uh, my second thing is I'd like to commend the two principals of the high school that, um, had their graduations this past week. Um, JP Stevens was on the 22nd and, uh, Edison High School was on the 27th, and they were both, uh, fabulously run. Uh, I enjoyed them, it was rather warm. But the students, I truly feel appreciated it, and the parents that were attending the ceremonies truly appreciated it. And I was so glad that we were able to fulfill their wish to even have a chance of being at graduation, and I thank, uh, both, uh, high schools for, uh, allowing me to attend uh, both evenings. Thank you. I'm done.
Shivi, you have anything? Shivi, no, okay, Jerry?
Yeah, I just want to echo what, um, yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just want to, can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to echo what, uh, Elizabeth said about the two high schools, um, the graduations. Um, this class of 2020 is very, very special. So they have two graduations. And I'd like to commend the, um, the two high school principals and those teachers who stayed with all the students for the graduation, you know, um, I went to two at each schools and the other one I couldn't uh, because of work commitment. And, um, they did a fantastic job. So kudos to the to the staff, the principal, and and all those teachers that, you know, all the staff that who actually set up, um, the podium, set up the, uh, you know, the, uh, the stadium for that, for the graduation, all the cleaning between, um, and and all the teachers who stay throughout the the whole graduation to be with the students, so thank you.
Yep, thank you, Jerry. Uh, I I also want to echo the same thing, I attended the JP and Edison High graduations, I attended all three at JP and one session at Edison High. Both principals and staffs did a great job. Uh, the custodians and everyone else there, uh, did a fantastic job in between each session to clean and, uh, sanitize all the chairs and everything else. Uh, they were sanitizing microphones, they were sanitizing their hands, so they did a great job, we did the best we could for the class of 2020, who will go down in history as one of the most special classes that we've ever had. And, uh, most resilient resilient, too, because they did get through this, uh, difficult time uh, with, you know, flying colors, so thank you to everyone. Uh, I also have one statement, uh, again.
Ralph, can I just say something before you start? I did, uh, commend the principals at the two high schools, I would never want to slight all the others that put in the time and commitment to those graduations.
Yep, and it was hot, so it worked.
That was hot.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, again, um, getting back to a little bit of what Mrs. Maroni was talking about, we have 13 members running for the public office of Board of Ed, which three seats are up. I would like to wish them all good luck. Thank you to Mrs. Patel and Mrs. Maroni for their dedicated service. And I know they will continue to work hard for the district over the next four months. I have been reading various social out, uh, meeting outlets and outlets in in general, and I wish and hope we can focus on qualifications, visions, and ideas during this campaign for the betterment of all. No matter your party, your gender, your race, sexual preference, et cetera, there is no room for inappropriate comments or posts or pictures of any kind on social media. There is no room for any of that for anyone that wants to hold any public office. I believe my fellow board members can agree on that, but I only speak for myself at this time. I have a very good working relationship with all my fellow members and many who are running. I hope and wish to keep that open line of communication open so we can exchange great ideas and great visions for this district, thank you. All right, so now we're going to go to public comments, which is number eight. Let me see who we got. Again, be respectful, and if you are not, you may be dropped. Uh, let's see. All right, again, Mr. DeAmmerich, uh, name and address, please.
Uh, yes, Anthony DeAmmerich, 15 Rodak Circle, thank you, Board President. Uh, I for one am not going to be one of those, uh, candidates this year, thank God. Uh, but I do want to say this, though, um, I wish them all the best of luck. Um, as far as opening up the schools, um, because I hear a lot of the rhetoric going around. And I understand what a difficult job and task you guys have, uh, at hand. Uh, I just want to remind folks, there's a lot of moving parts, the, uh, the the governor continues to make mandates that you guys have got to adhere to. And I I fully trust in the superintendent and in the board president to make the most rational decision, uh, which in the best interest of the students and, uh, and the faculty, so, um, I for one am going to you know, take a step back and allow you guys to do your job and to grade you later on down the road than to, uh, uh, to grade you now, so, um, I wish you guys the best of luck. As far as I I noticed that Ms. Maroni did not have her name on that list. Um, I want to thank her for her years of service, not only to the board, but as an educator as well. She was, uh, uh, she helped me a lot, uh, we've had very good conversations throughout the last couple of years. And, um, and Ms. Patel as well, uh, but Ms. Maroni, uh, specifically, you've, uh, you've been instrumental into, uh, into, uh, when I was a candidate, and, uh, you helped me along the way, and I wish you nothing but, uh, nothing but the best going forward.
Thank you, thank you, Anthony.
Absolutely, absolutely, um, and I also just wanted to mention, um, I will be, um, hosting a back-to-school drive, um, for really underprivileged students, uh, we're going to be hosting something towards the end of the summer, uh, I believe it's going to be the last Saturday in August at Roosevelt Park, uh, don't hold me to the date yet. Uh, we're still working on the details, but, uh, it's basically going to be able to, uh, allow people to drop off uh, school supplies, uh, for students who really can't afford them, um, and we'll make sure that they get into the right hands. Um, again, we're going to. Again, we're going to work on the details. So I ask everybody to, just to look out for my social media account on Facebook. We're going to post something relatively soon. And I hope when we do post, all board members stop by and say hello. I wish you guys all the best and we'll be talking soon. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay. Up next is Joe Weaver. Name and address, please. Mr. Weaver? Name and address, please.
Muted.
Joe Weaver? Go ahead.
Yeah, um, you guys are in violation of the Sunshine Law. Nobody has to give their name and address.
It is in our policy.
And you, it doesn't matter what the policy is. The law says when it's public speaking time, the public's allowed to speak. You just dropping everybody arbitrarily, you're professional accountability, integrity and accountability for your violation of law. Which is actually more explicit with people's constitutional rights. When it's public portion time, if Cristo or any other board member wants to politic or speak about whatever they want to speak about, that's what the public portion section is for. You can't decide what content you're going to allow. The content is based on whatever somebody wants to say. You're in violation of the law by doing that. What does the attorney say for any of that?
Are you done?
Oh, Ms. Attorney?
Are you done?
No, I'm asking the attorney a question. I, excuse you.
When you're done with your questions, we'll answer them. So go continue.
So, so you're in violation of the Sunshine Law. You're demanding people to give their name, which they don't have to do. If they gave a false na, address, it doesn't say anywhere in the Sunshine Law that you can't do that. You're just making up arbitrarily policies that are actually in violation of the law. You know, when, when Cristo just spoke, you just dropped his line like, like whatever. You can't do that. You know, the gentleman before said, oh, it's great that you follow all these, these new policies and with the address. Well, Mr. Shi's address is in public record. You're demanding people's addresses, but yet when somebody gives your address out, you don't like it. Kind of hypocritical, don't you think, Mr. Eriko? And you were just sent a open request, so hopefully you will fill it. I think you guys are in violation of the law. And like I said, I just filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office based on that. You know, your silence is just, is insane. You, you guys just ignore everything and, you know, you'll answer everybody else. But when, when you're questioned on something, you're either silent about it or you just drop the call and you censor people. You'll answer everybody else. Gentleman before, when it was time to speak, not regular public portion, but just for the amendments and stuff, you guys allowed him to just rant and rave. And then with Cristo, you dropped his call. You know, so you guys just go and do whatever you want. You're not following your own policies. So it's, it's not public portion time except for the amendments. You allowed that other gentleman to say whatever he wanted on whatever subject. But when Cristo does it, you guys drop the call. So you guys are in violation of the law. And I know you guys are recording this. So it's going to the Attorney General's Office and they are not looking favorably on people that are violating the law. If you look it up, they're nailing mayors, lawyers, everybody. Your lawyer just, just sit there and allows it. You, you, where did she get her law degree from? I mean, it's insane. Sunshine Law lets you speak about whatever public issues that you want to speak about, not just whatever you deem the content to be okay. If he wants to speak about anything, anal sex, if somebody wants to curse, it's a First Amendment protected activity. So when this, this board meets again in person, you can't throw somebody out for cursing. Violated somebody's rights la, the last meeting by, by just hanging up on them. They had four minutes left and you just hung up on them. You can't do that. What does the attorney have to say on that? Cursing or using profanity, which is not even profanity, but using any curse words is protected speech. And the law that violated that was found to be unconstitutional in 1985. So you hanging up on people that curse is illegal. You can't do it. It's their time to talk. And you can't say that, oh, they're being disorderly because we're on the phone right now. You know, or we're on the Zoom meeting or on the computer or wherever the case. So you can't even say that. So just because you disagree with the content of what somebody's saying, you deem it appropriate to just hang up on people. You know, you say that, oh, it's got to be professional. It's got to be this. No, it doesn't. That's just what, that's just your opinion. I have an opinion too. It doesn't have to be. And the law supports my opinion, not yours. So yours allows it. She has nothing to say.
We've lost him.
Where'd he go?
God, look, I think he's still there. So he has, he has less than a minute left.
Soon for violating people's rights. So I'll be sending you guys a tour claim notice for violating my rights and other people's rights. And I'll be sending you guys a cease and desist letter and hopefully you'll stop just being tyrants. That's all you guys are, tyrants. It's absolutely ridiculous that you feel that you could just do whatever you want during our meeting. It's the public's meeting, not just the Board of Education. It's the public. We're the ones that are paying to have all this stuff done that you guys are deciding on. You know, you guys are talking about all the kudos and all the negatives that you do. And, you know, you go to all these meetings and you do this. That's, you guys, you guys don't have to be there. You guys chose to, chose to do this. What do you want? A slap on the, on the back? I mean, that, that's what you're doing. That's what you want to do. That's great. I mean, we need people like you, you know, and I do have kudos to you guys for doing it. But at the same time, when, when people are challenging you, you guys just hang up on them. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Your time's up. Next up is Mrs. Archer. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you, Mrs.?
Yes, I got you. I'm unmuted. First, I'd like to say.
Hold on, Marie. Wait, 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 wait. Mrs. Blackburn, can you answer the gentleman's question?
I can say that the policy tracks the language of the Open Public Meetings Act and the board is allowed to do time, place and manner rules for the, in order to deal with the conduct of the meetings.
Board members, can you unmute because someone's got their mic on and it's coming through? All right. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn.
Yeah, I would like to clarify one thing regarding the, the, the original comment about the political speech. It is, you, 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 there are things that you may speak about, but you may not violate the time, place and manner restrictions.
Got you. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, Marie. You're up next. Name and address, please.
Oh, thank you very much. Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. First, I'd like to say thank you to the board for all their hard work. Mrs. Maroni, I treasure you. You are one of Edison's treasures. And I just want to say how much we appreciate all, all that you have done. Superintendent, I feel sorry for you because you have to make this tremendous hard decision. And with the survey, my first question is how, how will the sports be impacted? I know you have to see which schools are going back. But you have to, do you have to take a look at the sports policies? Like say if a student decided to do virtual learning, how will they engage in sports? Recently, the MVC have just reopened. So we found out that we couldn't take the permit test there. So we had to go to a driving school to take the permit test. The other thing I wanted to ask, when you're looking over the curriculum before the school starts, will there be any opportunities to do something on outside, like to do a classroom setting outside of the schools to give the students time to be outside and enjoying nature? I think, I think that's it. Oh.
Thank you. Dr. Bregan?
Yes. Thank you. Couple of questions regarding this, the students and families who elect the remote learning and participation in sports right now. We're looking to get guidance from the NJSI AA on that and also what other districts in our conferences are doing so that we would be consistent. Where that, that question came up from a number of families. So we're looking to get those answers. Hopefully I'll have those by beginning of next week. The DMV test, I'm a little disappointed in that because I think at our last board meeting, we approved for the, the teachers of the driver's ed to get a compensation to do those in the summer. I thought we were setting those up in the high schools in August where we had practiced the social distancing, but allow students to take the written driver's test because I know they need that for the permits. I will look into that with our high school administration. Regarding the curricula being, some portions of it being outside, yeah, absolutely. For those that are in person, should we actually be in school in September? Not only that, we're looking at possibly securing tents and some other things to increase our outside spaces on our facilities because some of them have a great many large acreage where we could do those kinds of things and spread people out even more. So we are exploring all those options. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next is Cristo.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, I love how you, how you allowed Brian Rivera to speak for anything but resolutions at the one point. And you didn't mute him. But being that he's going to be a Board of Ed candidate, it makes me wonder that he supports censoring the public and everything against the Sunshine Law. And, oh, to Dr. Bregan, before I continue, Dr. Bregan at the last meeting, by accident, I meant to say the county superintendent Anderson, right? But by accident, I said your name because you're superintendent as well. I meant to say Murphy. Kyle Anderson rubber stamps whatever Murphy does. I didn't mean to say you. I want to apologize right there. I didn't, I didn't notice until, but that just shows how professional you are, that you didn't even cut the public's time to correct them and that you're willing to get a dissenting opinion. That just shows your character. You're a man of high integrity. I'm just going to continue on with my statements. Okay. So there was a letter from an old BOE member, now councilman. I formally request that Jerry Shi be removed from the Facility and Finance Chair. One, Jerry Shi has actively protected his Chinese school from rate increases. Two, Jerry Shi as chairman of Facility and Finance should have brought up the low rates of the Chinese school and asked us to vote on it according to Policy 7510, page two. Three, Dan has said we vote and approve these rates every year in the policy. If true, and Jerry Shi voted on these, he needs to be investigated for ethics violations for his close involvement with the Chinese school. I will call myself and have him investigated. Four, if we have not voted on or reviewed these rates as per Policy 7510, she needs to be removed from Facility and Finance Chair. That's probably why he's not on it right now for never bringing it up, therefore protecting his Chinese school and jeopardizing our children's welfare. It's probably why our taxes are going up. Now, I want to continue and make some statements. Jerry Shi, what do you have to hide? Why hasn't Jerry Shi submitted his fingerprints? Why does Jerry Shi refuse to take the polygraph test as requested by the committee of the whole? Why did Falcone Patel, the vice president, refuse to testify about the racist flyers? Falcone Patel's cousin Mohin, who is a candidate for Board of Education, running with Jerry Shi, tell promotes violence against pregnant women? He deleted his Facebook to cover up his racist posts targeting Muslims and Jews. Mohin Patel is anti-Semitic, who believes Israel, the Jewish state, should be destroyed. Oh, about earlier, I just want to say you guys said that the kid needs a doctor's note in order to wear the mask. No, absolutely not. He doesn't need a doctor's note. Right, right then and there, you're breaking the American with Disabilities Act. And the first fine is going to be $75,000 and the second fine goes up to $150,000. So I just want to make you well aware of that now. I appreciate you guys admitting that yes, if the student doesn't want to wear a mask, he doesn't have to wear a mask. But at the same time, you guys should tell the parents the truth. That blackmail could be opened by Governor Murphy by law. Otherwise, you're going to, you're mandated to, or you're going to lose your funding. Some places like South Amboy get half their funding from Governor Murphy. They have to do whatever that dictator says. You guys need to tell the truth. If you don't feel comfortable, bring your child back to school. They don't have to come back to school, especially if you have immunodeficient children. And then you got kids, right, that is an out of district? Would you say out of district placement is like a Piscataway VOTAC?
Are you done?
Would, would you say an out of district placement would be Piscataway VOTAC?
As soon as you're done, we'll answer him, Cristo.
Well, I, I need to know that. Can you answer that? What are you going to do with added, with kids that go out of district, right? Sometimes they still spend their full day there, but half of them, a lot of them, they come half the day to come back to Edison High. So what if the schools that they go to out of district have that day, they have relaxed coronavirus protocols, whatever, they're going to come back. They're going to infect the students at Edison High. It doesn't matter what protocols you have. It won't matter if you follow the CDC guidelines. What are you doing outside of the CDC guidelines to protect these children? I also want to know that. That, that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
I just want to add, I just want to add that, that one of the board members did say some, I, I can't remember what she said exactly. But yes, in resolutions, if you're not speaking for resolutions, then yes, you can kick me out. But at the same time, you didn't do that with Brian Rivera. But once the public comments portion comes, then you can't do these things. You can't kick anyone out just because you don't like them, what they have to say, the address that they gave, none of that. So I mean, you guys hire the best lawyer in the world and still they're not going to protect you from that. The law is the law and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Cristo. Dr. Bregan, you have anything to address Cristo, please?
I think I got some of the questions, some answers to the questions. One was about the, I, I thought I heard him say that children, parents have the option to not send their kids to school, the children to school if they're immunodeficient or something like that. Parents indeed do have the option to be totally remote as, as it stands now. And we have, as I said earlier, I think a large portion of our parents did indeed choose that option. Regarding an out of district school and the Piscataway vocational programs, that those are run by the Middlesex County Vocational Department, School District. And we will work closely with them to ensure that we have similar, if not the same, protocols. An out of district school, as I view that, would be a special needs school where some of our more disabled students attend their entire day there. And typically those students that are placed in those settings do not come back to our portion, portion of their school day. We're doing a great many things regarding the C, the CDC protocols and we're actually exceeding those protocols in a lot of areas in our expectations for cleanliness and working with students and social distancing. We'll elaborate more on that when our plan becomes formalized. Actually, we're looking to work on that right now and tomorrow. We're having that meeting, the parent forum, which is on Tuesday, August 4th, where we'll share all that information with the public. We haven't shared our formal plans with the Board of Education yet. So I don't want to speak about that now.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bregan. Amy Ryan's up next. Name and address, Mrs. Ryan.
Amy Ryan, I'm from Edison. I just wanted to follow up on my questions from a prior meeting. Has the board done any further evaluation or come to any conclusions about the engagement of paraprofessionals in the remote learning environment? If you'd like to hear any thoughts that might be available that developed since our last discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Dr. Bregan?
Yeah, we've had conversation on that, Mrs. Blackburn and I, and we're getting the legal status on that. Ms. Blackburn, I don't know if we have a final decision on that?
Not, not, we're still working on it. I have also had conversations with Mr. Conklin on it. So that we think that there is a way so that students will be able to be supported by the Paris. I can't speak specifically, but they, there will be, there, as part of the plan, my understanding is, some supports.
Thank you.
Consistent with the IP's.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Baker, you're up next.
Thank you again, Board President Eriko and the board. Just wanted to take a quick moment to say thanks to Mrs. Maroni and Mrs. Patel for their service to the board. uh, for their service to the board. Uh, my, my heart dropped a little bit, I'll be honest. Uh, when I didn't see their names on the, on the list of people running. Uh, but I'm very thankful, uh, for their service to the district over the many years. Um, and particularly Mrs. Maroni to you, I think, you know, I had goosebumps the first time I heard you speak about Dylan's Wings of Change. Uh, and I think it's just been phenomenal watching that program truly go from a small ember to a raging fire throughout the district. And hearing you talk with such fervent passion about such an important, uh, program and such an important memory of a student loss. I really hope and encourage, and, and sort of the final months of your tenure on the board, that, uh, the board and the district are open and willing to working with you, uh, to developing a strategic plan to ensure this program, uh, continues in the years ahead. Because I think we all know with schools, you know, it's hard once you lose kind of the standard bearer behind a program or initiative. And really, uh, hope and encourage, uh, the Edison School District to continue this program, uh, moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Go ahead, Mrs. Maroni, unmute yourself. Mrs. Maroni, unmute.
Yep. Um, I want to thank Brett, that was very, very sweet of you to say. And the plan is, um, Ian Hockley is going to continue this year. There's a training on August 17th for Edison. It's going to be incorporated into the remote learning. And just because I'm going off the board in January doesn't mean that you've seen the end of me, because I will be around with the Wingman program and I will be coming to Board of Ed meetings. So, um, I, I, I won't be on the board, but I'll still be around. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Beth. Up next, Mr. Walker, name and address, please.
Hello?
Hello, name and address, please.
Hey, this is Wolfie from New Jersey. Uh, the last time I left my address, I got hung up on, so I just, I'm afraid to do that now.
All, all you have to do is give what town?
Oh, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I was, uh, just wanted to chime in because I'm like very concerned. I got a bunch of emails that, uh, I received stating that the Edison Board of Education is using grant money to fund child sex trafficking when it's supposed to be spent on learning materials and, uh, used on phone books and computers and things of that nature. I, uh, I, I don't know too much about that. Uh, I can't confirm any of this, but, uh, a lot of people have been, um, giving me certain reading material to, um, to point to. And, uh, I was wondering if there was a big, uh, like, uh, underground hustle going on and the Edison Board of Education, uh, is involved in some kind of ring like that?
Is that all you have, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, that's-
Mrs. Maroni, please mute yourself, Ms. Maroni.
Also, am I still here?
Yes.
Um, I wanted to, uh, say that, uh, the previous caller, uh, I believe his name was Cristo. He made some very valid points and, uh, I would very, uh, much consider, um, some of the points that he made. And, uh, try to do some research about that and, and have a, like a, a private meeting amongst yourselves, um, to try to correct some of the issues that are going on, uh, Edison Board of Education. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair.
Uh, hold it, go ahead.
If, if, if I may, um, having heard that, to the extent that anything like that, any citizen hears, please make certain to contact either the police, the prosecutor's office, um, or the Division of Children and Families. Child, child safety is absolutely, uh, number one. Uh, so that to the extent there is any of that, it needs to be turned over to the proper authorities immediately.
Thank you, Hope, you took the words right out of my mouth.
Can I weigh in on that too?
Sure.
You know, as a school superintendent, um, I would reiterate what our board attorney said. If there's any accusations or any hints of impropriety with children, please report them directly to my office. Um, I'm available all the time. And again, if you have an instance of crimes being committed, immediately report them to the police and the prosecutor's office. We cooperate 100%. Our number one job is to provide for the safety and well-being of students and I'm committed to that. So if, if you have any evidence and emails of that, please turn them over to the police, uh, at once. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is, uh, Mr. Rivera.
Hi, thank you for taking me in.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Stony Road, Edison.
Thank you.
I was just listening to the conversation, so I just wanted to, to make it clear. I'm not pro censorship, I don't know where that came from. Um, the reality was, I was listening to this meeting with my seven-year-old son, my wife and my four-year-old daughter in the family room and someone cursed. So that's the reason why I addressed it. It's nothing personal, it's just I'm sitting in my room with my children and I had to shut my computer right off the bat. So that's why I commended that you guys are doing something about it. So, Mr., nothing to you, I actually applaud your advocacy, keep doing what you're doing. Um, but that's the reason why I brought it up. I, I, I just didn't feel it was appropriate for my, my family to hear that. So my real question I really wanted to ask you was, now that we got a plan going on, I wanted to say thank you with the fact that we have, uh, you're along the five days and you're actually meeting the essential workers. So you're gonna have a five-day plan. My question to you was, are you gonna have a morning or after-school plan, uh, morning or after-school program for the, for, for these children?
Is that it, Mr. Rivera?
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good night. Uh, Dr. Bragan, I know we discussed this the other day.
It's, it's a great question, you know, typically, um, we have other people that rent their facilities and use them for outside agencies, um, due to our concern about the COVID and, and cleaning practices that are gonna have to take place after school. Right now, we're not allowing any of those, um, outside agencies, whether they be, um, language schools, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and whatever activities, recreational programs. However, we haven't, as a board, I don't think, made a final decision on before and after-school programs for children that the parents need to support if they are indeed coming to school with the reduced number of students coming. It's a possibility, I'd have to coordinate that. And we're, we're in conversations with the town, the township, because those services are provided by the township personnel. So, um, we haven't made a final decision on that, that'll be forthcoming very shortly though. Good question.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rachel Scheinver, Schein, Scheinvar. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Name and address, please, Rachel.
Hi, my name's Rachel and I live actually in Madawan, but I am, um, I have a lot of friends and family in the Edison School District. I, um, had a question about air quality. I know that a lot of the schools are not air-conditioned. And I know there was a lot of talk on temperature, uh, thermometers and the pricing of that. I feel like air quality is very important. And I was wondering if the district had any plans to, to either put air conditioning in or get those machines that help purify the air to make it safer for people to come back. Also, I know that it's very hard for children to wear masks. And I think having to wear a mask in a 90-degree room is gonna make it very hard for them to concentrate on their learning. So I was wondering if there's any talk on what is going to be done about air conditioning.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, Dr. Bragan?
It's a great, it's a great question. Um, um, if, if I could, I would have all our spaces air-conditioned and climate-controlled, but that would be significantly expensive. Even if we had a magic wand for the money for those devices and, and changing of the HVAC equipment in each of the 19 schools, they don't, many don't have the electrical capacity to even handle that kind of load. So it's a significant expense. A- as you may or may not know, we've gone for a referendum a number of times and we didn't meet with success. So in the short-term future, I don't see air conditioning being in place in any of our schools in September or in the near future. However, working with our new director of facilities, building and grounds, we are trying to work with all our HVAC equipment to make sure it's properly cleaned and, um, changing the filters on a more regular basis to ensure that the air that is in the room is, is, is as clean and sanitized as possible. And we also are looking at getting some, um, for lack of a better word, I'm gonna say fogger machines as sanitizers to go in the classrooms after school to do an aerosol cleaning as well. So we're doing all we can and what we have and, uh, we'll, we'll make the best of it as best we can. Mr. Ercow, I think you were muted right there.
Next up is Cristo Meth, I'm sorry. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Cristo Meth from 14 Fox Lane in Edison. Uh, I just want to share with the public some police reports pertaining to Cristo Macropolis. The reports which I attained through Oprah, uh, are as follows. Uh, there is an incident number 11065567 on December 18th, 2011, through 14 Fox Road. Cristo Macropolis is a candidate for Board of Education. Uh, the report states on December 18th, 2011, at approximately 13:30 hours, I responded to 14 Fox Road for a report of a domestic dispute. Upon my arrival, I spoke with the victim who stated the following. Victim stated, she has been having an ongoing issue with her son, the suspect Cristo Macropolis, due to his drug use.
Hold on one second, sir.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, I must remind you that if, that, any statement that you make may make you subject, um, to suit or, or liability for defamation. So please be very cautious, um, and to, to the extent that those are not, may not be public records, um, you may be subjecting yourself to liability.
This is a public record, it's a police report that I got from an Oprah request. Victim stated, and the victim being Cristo's mother, stated that she had been having an ongoing issue with her son, suspect Cristo Macropolis, due to his drug abuse. On today's date, suspect returned home and became enraged in a verbal argument with his mother. Victim advised me the argument was over prescription drugs that the suspect wanted his mother to pay for. Victim stated she refused and her son became enraged. He began to throw things off of shelves and desks. And he also picked up one of her planters located on the back deck and smashed it into pieces. Suspect then told his mother, "I'm going to effing kill you." Suspect fled the scene when victim called the police. I'd like to read another police report. This is also from the Edison Police Department. This is incident 18046937. It says, suspect Cristo Macropolis, on August 18th, 2119 hours, Officer Sudnick was detailed to Dunkin' Donuts, 1714 Woodbridge Avenue, for a possible dispute. Upon arrival, I spoke with the victim, who stated that there is a male customer that comes to the store all the time and always causes an issue. She only knew his name to be Chris and that he lived on Fox Road. She stated that three years ago, he threatened to kill her and her whole family over not getting free donuts. She said he came in crying to apologize a few days later. He then directed me to speak with her coworker. He stated that Chris came into the store today and stated, "You know that B with the tattoos?" Referring to the woman that worked there, "If I see her, I'm gonna jump her and stab her." I was able to identify Chris to be Cristo Macropolis from 14 Fox Road. I encourage anyone to Oprah the police reports of Cristo Macropolis, 14 Fox Road, and you will see his disgusting and vile history of drug abuse and terroristic incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, please. Uh, Beth and Jerry, all in favor? Hi, thank you, have a good evening, everyone.